Good evening and welcome to the Planning Commission of the City of Moreno Valley. I now call this meeting to order on April 25, 2019 at 7:03 PM. We have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Brugeras.
Here.
Commissioner Steven.
Present.
Commissioner Harris.
Here.
Commissioner Dejeanay.
Here.
Commissioner Korzak.
Present.
Vice Chairperson Baker.
Here.
Chairperson Sims.
Here.
Okay, the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Commissioner Dejeanay. Okay, we're going to move into the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion for the agenda?
I'll move to approve the agenda submitted.
Second.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion made by Commissioner Baker and a second by Commissioner Korzak. All right, we did it, it's approved. It's my first time as chair, so I haven't seen this part of the deal. All right. Okay, we're on to public comments procedure. So any person wishing to address the commission on any matter, either under the public comments section of the agenda or scheduled items or public hearings, must fill out a request to speak form available at the door. The completed form must be submitted to the secretary prior to the agenda item being called by the chairperson. And speaking to the commission member of the public may be limited to three minutes per person, except for the applicant for entitlement. The commission may establish an overall time limit for comments on a particular agenda item. Members of public must direct their questions to the chairperson of the commission and not to other members of the commission, applicant, the staff, or the audience. The next item is public comments on any item not on the agenda. Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
All right. The next item on agenda is approval of the consent calendar. So do we have any speaker requests?
No, sir.
Okay, there is one item on the consent item, which is the minutes from the April 11, 2019 regular meeting. So do we have a... What's the pleasure of our commission?
I make a motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
I'll second. All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Baker and a seconded by Commissioner Dejeanay. All right, we had a one abst... six yes, one abstention. Oh, yeah, you know what, I forgot I wasn't here, so...
Did you?
I did.
Did you?
I did. Sounds okay?
All right.
I guess I still was on vacation in my mind right there, sorry guys. Okay, the next item on the agenda is a public hearing item. Item one is a request for a conditional use permit, PEN 18-0195 for a commercial cannabis micro business. Applicant is Christopher Henry and Michael Lee. Can we have staff report?
Mr. Chair, the first item will be presented by Staff Planner Jeff Swak.
Chairman Sims, members of the Planning Commission, good evening. Movail Marijuana is requesting approval of a conditional use permit for their micro business to be located at 24889 Elder Avenue, Units 1 through 3. A cannabis... Their micro business will be... will include a dispensary. The following three uses: a dispensary, manufacturing, as well as distribution of items to other commercial businesses, to commercial dispensaries. The zoning for the site is community commercial, which is appropriate for a micro business. The nearest residential is at least 350 feet to the west and northwest of this site. The city council approved an ordinance and the municipal code defines a micro business to have a minimum of four types, or four components. I'm sorry, a minimum of at least three types of components: manufacturing, cultivation, distribution, and a dispensary. The city council also is authorizing a maximum of three micro businesses in the city, and this is your first application that you have in front of you tonight. So as mentioned, this dispens... This micro business is looking at having a dispensary, which you've seen in the past, that is the retail use, retail sales of cannabis products. Manufacturing, which is taking cannabis and breaking it down, putting it into packages, labeling it, putting it into boxes for distribution, or taking items that would be used for cannabis, such as the vapor pens, or taking the product and creating cannabis cigarettes, and then packaging those for distribution. Now, it's important to note that the distribution is not to the public, you can't deliver to public, it's not allowed in Moreno Valley. The distribution would be to other cannabis dispensaries. Hours of operation for this built... For this business complies with state law between the hours of 6:00 AM and 10:00 PM, seven days a week. So the building itself is 30,000 square feet. The applicant will be taking the easterly portion of the building. It is approximately 12,164 square feet, and it is a two-story space, as you see from the images in your staff report. The location on Elder Avenue, it is on... The building is on one parcel. There is a tenant on the west, westerly portion of the building. It is West Coast Spas Retail Sales. The easterly portion will be for Movail Marijuana. The surrounding businesses, to the west, you have a Best Western Motel. On the south, you have State Route 60, it's the freeway on-ramp. To the north, on the north side of Elder, there is a vacant lot, then there is a water treatment facility, and a total of five of fast food restaurants on Elder, west of Paris Boulevard. The site itself has 135 parking spaces. What's required by code for this micro business would be only 50 parking spaces, so there's adequate parking for the new tenant, as well as the existing tenant. The business, as I mentioned, it's in a two-story space. The ground level will be where the dispensary is located, where the manufacturing will take place, and where the distribution will take place. The public spaces only deal with the dispensary. The rest of the spaces for the manufacturing and distribution are only for employees, so the only access, the only way to get into those spaces is through controlled doors. So they'll have locks on them, and you would need a key card or a key fob to get from the public space into the manufacturing or the distribution areas. So on the first level, as I mentioned, you have the dispensary, you have the manufacturing offices totaling 9,000, almost 9,800 square feet on the first level. The second level is a little over 2,300 square feet in area, and this is where you'll have, if you looked at the staff report, there in the floor plans, it identifies vendor display areas. And what that means is there'll be various booths, so vendors that have different products can provide information and education to the customers on different cannabis products or the use of cannabis, and those vendor booths will rotate. So the challenge of having a two... A space that's on two floors is to make sure that it's secure, to make sure that you will have, in this case, the applicant's proposing three armed guards. One will be patrolling the second level, one will be stationed at the front door to control the ingress and egress, and the other one, I imagine, would rove around the space internally and outside of the building. I had prepared in the PowerPoint presentation some images, but they were also included in the staff report of what the building looks like on the exterior. The applicant is proposing to repaint the building, to replace the glass for the parking lot. They will be re-slurry sealing the parking lot, because if you've driven through on the property, it's in pretty bad shape. So by slurry sealing and re-striping the parking lot, it will be much more visible as where you can park. They will also be, for the landscaped areas that are dead, replacing the landscaping. And in that this pro... This property fronts the freeway, the southerly border has quite a bit of landscaping that's very dense. And in the conditions of approval, it's requiring that, because that dense landscaping could be a place that people could hide, they want to thin out the landscaping. There's actually a condition requiring that the landscape plans be provided to staff for review and approval, but that the landscaping on the south side would be thinned out a bit, so that it doesn't create a security problem. Speaking of security, the loading areas and the secured parking are actually on the north side of the building. The applicant will have a gated area. This building does apply itself well, I believe, for secured deliveries, secured pickup areas. There will be a gate that will, when the trucks move in, it can close. There will be cameras and a security guard, so that if product is leaving, product's coming in, or cash is leaving, it's very... It should be very secure. The security plan was submitted to staff for review. It has information that identify that there will be security guards during the hours of operation, as I mentioned that earlier in the staff report. There will be no less than 100 cameras inside the building and on the exterior of the space to... So that the guards can monitor activities around the building. As I mentioned, controlled access throughout, and the two secured parking spaces will be on the north side of the building in a gated parking area. Odor control, as you add uses, can be more important than just a dispensary. The applicants will be using specialty carbon filters that will filter out the odors, as well as particulate matter, before the air inside the building is released to the exterior, so you don't have a strong odor outside of the building. That is what the code requires. The way that the city can monitor that and control it is, that is actually information that will be submitted to the building department as part of the heating, ventilation, and air conditioning, or HVAC, plans that the building division will approve. So the city has complete control over the odor control by the tenant improvement plans that are submitted to the city for review. We... In closing, we have received one email, only, that I'm aware of. This was received from Mr. Tom Durell Senior, and his question is that, or his comment is, since the proximity of this micro business is fairly close to the Best Western Motel to the west, that... And because there are times when children's or youth sport events will be staying, youths will be staying at the hotel, make sure that there is adequate signing that states you have to be 21 years of age or older to enter the premises. And those are conditions that the applicant must follow. Only, you have to be 21 years of age to get in, and signage is required as well. So with that, I'll close my staff presentation. Be happy to answer questions, and the applicants are present as well. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you for the staff report. Are there any commissioners with questions for staff?
I have questions. On the second floor vendors, can you give me an example of what type of display it would be, and are they paying to display that, a fee to the applicant? I'm not understanding the vendors.
I'm not sure about the second part of your question, whether or not they actually paid to rent space. Maybe perhaps the applicant can address that for you. But as it was explained to me, they would have individuals there representing different cannabis products that could be... That either are for sale in the dispensary or could be for sale. And then if people have questions on how to use different, whether it be a cannabis cigarette, an oil, or something, how they would actually use that. So it'd be educational as well. And my understanding from the applicant is, the displays would change with time, but perhaps the applicant could shed additional information for you on your question.
Sure. I'm not that familiar with the cannabis products, so I was just curious.
Yes.
And there will be no money or exchange taking place on that level, it's just purely information, no sales.
My understanding is it's purely informational, educational and informational only.
Thank you.
Question. I had an issue with the name itself, because I was... It was kind of like, well, we can't tell them what to name their business. The way I had read everything, it said that there was not supposed to be any evidence of commercial cannabis dispensing, but the name says it all. Movail Marijuana, that's basically what they're going to be selling. And it just says, "The identification's signee shall be limited to identification only and shall not contain any information that identifies, advertise, or lists the services or products offered." To me, they don't need anything else but the name. So I don't know, I'm just... It's like a gray area for me, and I just had a problem with it because of what I was reading here. I know 417, 18, and that's where I got this from. When did that change?
So in the ordinance, there are regulations, as you've read, that regulate the number of signage and the type of information on the sign, limiting it to the name of the business.
Right.
Perhaps the city attorney could address the issue of First Amendment freedom of speech, but they... A business can place their name on there, on their single sign, but as far as the name, I'm not sure.
Right. I just had a problem with the fact that it does state what will be sold, and the way I understood it, they weren't supposed to actually... I don't know, I've seen a lot of shops, and I've seen names, and none of them really come right out and say...
Correct. And the language, as you've referred to, states that signage shall be limited to the identification, the licensees, business name, and shall contain no advertising of symbols, language, music gestures, cartoon characters, or other content elements known to appeal primarily to persons below the legal age of consumption, the legal consumption age. So...
I mean, it's just blatantly out there, you know what I mean? It's like a horse farm. What's on the farm? Horses. I mean, I have a problem with it. I'm not going to tell anybody what to do, like I said, but if they would consider maybe tweaking the name a little, I don't know if they can, if there could be some step... You know, some sort of amendment to it, because I know we're going to have a lot of them coming down, and if we set precedent here...
And I believe our city attorney has a...
No, I was going to jump in, but I think you described it fairly accurately. Our code does allow them to...
There he comes.
Does not restrict the business name, but it does say that you can't have any other signage other than the business name.
If I may to address here, I'm Christopher Henry, by the way.
The... You'll have your...
Yeah, we want to make sure we keep the testimony in the right order, so yeah, just hold on to it, we'll definitely get you up here.
I also had a question of staff, similar on the signage, but not exactly the same as is, but typically on these other... We've had several of these type businesses come through for CUPs and on. Maybe I missed it, but on none of the exhibits, it does not show where signage would be located, and kind of typically... Oh, does... Is it on? Oh, I didn't get that, I guess. Well, never mind, if it's already there, then...
To your point, Chairman, there... The signage review and approval, review and approval is conducted by city staff, and typically that's done if the conditional use permit is approved by the Planning Commission. So the city will... The staff will be requiring plans to be submitted, which identify exactly where the signage will be going, and what it looks like, how large it is.
Any other commissioner questions, staff?
Well, I just, you know, I have, like I said, I have a lot of kids and grandkids, and I just know that everybody that does use the product is going to know without really having the name blatantly out there. They're going to know where these shops are, without a doubt. And because I've talked to quite a few people that do use, and they told me that. And so, basically, I don't know, if you've got a shop that just says that, I don't know. It just... Maybe as a mother and grandmother, it's kind of bothersome to me. And that's not part of what we need to do here, but I'm just, as a resident and citizen, I'm just throwing it out there.
Staff or commissioner questions?
Yes, I was looking at condition of approval number 21. No person shall smoke, ingest, or otherwise consume cannabis in any form on or within 20 feet of the dispensary site. Municipal Code 9.092... Blah, blah, blah. My question is, is because within the conditions of approval, we do include parking lots. Does that 20 feet, is that from the front door, or does that also include the parking lot?
My belief is that it's from the business site itself, from the building, in that it's difficult to restrict what could be done in a parking lot, especially if it's, you know, 50 feet, 100 feet away. The intent is that people typically would come to this facility, purchase the items, and then get in their car and go to either the residence or somewhere else, not take the product close to the facility itself. But my understanding, it's 12 feet of the building, the dispensary site.
Mm-hmm.
I'm sorry, 20 feet.
Yeah, it's pretty close. That's probably the distance between me and you, maybe even less. So I wondered then, is there any other municipal code that prohibits someone from ingesting marijuana just out in the... In the public? The parking lot areas, just right there in the sidewalk, walking from that place to McDonald's, or Taco Bell, or to the hotel, or...
In addition to city law, there would be state laws, which I don't have with me, that would regulate who and... Who can ingest, and where you can ingest cannabis products. The city's municipal code deals specifically with, in this case, land use, but I would imagine the state law, just as it affects where you can and can't smoke, where you can and can't drink, that there would be similar requirements, to your point, on where you can and can't ingest a cannabis product.
And just as a concern, I'd say maybe as a city, we might want to extend that to 100 feet, maybe 200 feet, or yards. It's a little close, 20 feet is not very far. Maybe for me, it's a... Or you, it's pretty close. The other question I had was, you mentioned three security guards. And would that door, security guard, because it says here, again, back to the condition 21, would he... Would move people away from ingesting in front of the building? I guess that's something for the applicant, since we have three security guards, one on top, one inside, one outside. Would that person outside be responsible for moving people along, that sort of thing? So maybe the applicant can address that.
Yes, going back to the name, you know, it talked a lot about things that would appeal to kids, cartoons and such things like that, but I would think that even the word marijuana would appeal to 15, 16, 17-year-old, and they're kids. So I'm just, you know, that's one question I would have. That wouldn't be a violation of the spirit of the law, of the spirit of the law.
I don't think that that violates the intent of what the Moreno Valley Municipal Code language is regarding signage content. But also, remember to your point, which is a very good one, that the... It is up to the cannabis operator, in that it's a conditional use permit, to comply with all of the conditions of approval, and if anyone is underage and goes into the business, and they're allowing that, that is a huge problem. And so it is to the benefit of the applicant to comply with all conditions of approval, which include regulating the age groups that try to come in, and making sure that they show identification, they prove their age, so that if the name does attract someone that's 18 years of age, for example, or 20 years of age, they actually cannot come in because they're not 21 or over.
Well, I'm kind of understanding what they're both saying, and here we are in a new area, as the Planning Commission, the city council in Moreno Valley, bringing in all the dispensaries. And I think what we're... I may be trying to say is, before we... And I don't know how easy it is to change municipal code, but before we start getting signage, and let's get high, let's smoke it up, let's tear it down, let's do all that stuff, we better set a precedence before that kind of stuff comes in. You know, because of course, we're going to have a pretty saturated town, and they're going to be competing, you know? So I want my place to look the best, and I want it to attract the most cups, so I'm going to have a scientist to say, hey, let's get it on, you know? And we kind of want to stop that before it gets started.
Any other commissioner questions?
Thank you, Chair. With the 20 feet, I had a problem at one time, but Chapter 5 in the city ordinance tells every dispensary, every dispensary that already got approved, and those that are coming in in the future, the licenses shall prohibit laundering by individual outside the license premises or anywhere on the property. So the security guard has an obligation to remove anybody that's around the dispensary, especially young people. So that's an obligation that the applicant will have if he gets approved. So that's what gives me comfort from the 20 feet. The 20 feet, to me, means cigarettes, as they came out in the past with the federal law. That was the 20 feet of smoking, okay? But looking at this, with the last five applicants, is consistent. It all means the same, that no one can hang out on the property. They all got to leave, there's no hanging out. That's what makes me have confidence on this part here about laundering. Now, I want to talk about micro business, because I couldn't understand what it meant when I got the staff report. So I had to go back to October 24, 2017, when it first started, okay? That's when it first started, those were the rules that the staff gave the council members. Then, in October 2016, 2018, a lot of it was revised, and then we had the rules. In December of 2018, these are the rules, the final rules of what dispensary means. Now, you educated me, because I didn't know that you had to have three or more. What I learned by reading the report, or the chapters, that the one thing they cannot have is testing at all, that I learned. Now, my question is, this individual is going to have three separate components in one: dispensary, distro, and manufacturing. Are they considered one of each? That eliminates one from the 23, one from the five, and one from the three? Or is the micro business one whole piece on its own, and doesn't eliminate anything else from the others?
Chair, if I may address that question, that's a very good question. It is actually, the city council authorized a total of three micro businesses, so entirety of this business. There could be three micro businesses in the city, so you wouldn't count a dispensary as one, the manufacturing as one, and distribution as one, to your point. It's actually one business that meets the code definition of a micro business that has at least three of those components.
So in other words, with the three, we're going to have additional, three more dispensaries, three more distros, and three manufacturing, besides the 23 that we already got approved?
The applicant... The applicant can choose for the other two micro-businesses what combination they want. Perhaps they would choose not to have a dispensary, but have cultivation. So it's really up to the applicant to decide of those four components, which three, or they could have all four. The code would allow that as well. But it's up to them to decide, but no, no fewer than three of those four components can they have.
That's a separate unit on its own, so that doesn't deduct from the twenty-three or from the other ones at all?
That, that, that goes to the total number that are allowed in the city and that number is forty-three.
Right, okay, so in other words, we allow twenty-three dispensary, so by having a micro, it's not going to give me twenty-two, drop down to twenty-two?
Correct.
Right, okay, I just want to get that clear, okay, because we're adding, all right, no problem. Okay. The second floor, that's by accident, I thought that dispensary was going to be on top and then, but we got that clear because I finally looked at it. It's on its own and I heard one of the commissioners mention that we're going to allow customers to go upstairs and look at this place on, on product. So there will be no kind of exchange of, of cannabis? There's, there's going to be no giving of packages, try this, take this home, whatever. There's going to be none of that upstairs.
So Chairman, if I may, I would rec, I would suggest at the appropriate time when questions are finished of staff to have the applicant come up and ask. I have a basic understanding based on what the applicant shared with me on the various vending booths throughout, throughout the business. And I want to make sure that you get the information directly from the applicant, so you understand what they, what they're proposing, if that's acceptable.
One more on the control, odor control plans, oh, plan, yes. In, in, in this case, that we did do two weeks ago, we mentioned, and the point word to me, personally speaking, and that's carbon filters. Are, are, are those the best that this applicant's going to put in? Is that the, something the best to stop the odor that each other dispensary are going to use, carbon?
I've read through four odor control plans that have been submitted. I've seen two com, two different types of filters, carbon and the other is more like a gel filter. I, I'm not an expert to state which is better. But ultimately, if there, if you pass by this micro-business and/or we receive complaints that people are smelling cannabis from the outside or have a strange odor, the applicant is conditioned to make sure that there is no scent, no particulate matter outside of the business. So if whatever filter they're using is the best, but the system isn't working, the air exchange rate is not working, the applicant is required and conditioned to make sure that they address that problem. But, but to answer your question, I've seen two different types. I, I, I'm not sure which is better, but if the carbon doesn't successfully eliminate the odor, then they're going to have to address that.
Yeah, I got two more questions. Thank you, sir. On page twenty-four, number thirty-two, waste. It talks about waste and storage and disposal of marijuana cannabis products. How is waste being disposed of? Do we have a red bag that somebody goes and picks up in a van and takes it with them?
My, my understanding and the conversation that I had with the applicant is, they will, the, the waste that they're referring to is, would be a cannabis product that's expired. You can't just throw it in the trash and put it in the dumpster, as you well know. So the, the local waste company has to be contacted. There are regulations for how you can dispose of the products, what you need to do so that people don't jump in the dumpster and pull it out and try to use it after it's expired. But what you do to change it so that it can't be used. And then, so the waste companies have a schedule of coming out, picking it up. I'm sure the applicant can describe the specifics. But my understanding is, it's a separate type of waste that's disposed of and packaged and then collected independently of the regular trash from the business.
Okay, that's good to know. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
My last one, that's important. I know the, the law says that you have to be twenty-one and over. And I had a conversation with someone. If they have a medical marijuana certificate and they're eighteen, are they allowed to go inside the shop, inside the dispensary and buy? If they have a card and they're eighteen?
My belief is no, because the city's ordinance states you must be twenty-one years of age or older to go into, in this case, this micro-business, to go to the dispensary and buy product.
Right, thank you so much for the answers.
Welcome.
So Commissioner Vergara's brought up this, this whole thing about the micro-business and the tally on the number of dispensaries the ordinance approved. So, but it seems to me, just a couple, or a couple meetings ago, or maybe it was last meeting I was here, I was absent the last one, but we approved, I think, a distribution and a dispensary, but they were two separate CUPs. Is that, am I recalling that correctly?
I believe you are. In the ordinance, in the ordinance itself, it identifies categories of uses related to commercial cannabis businesses. And those can, categories are, and this is different from the micro-business, so I'll just read those briefly to you. A dispensary, a testing facility, cultivation, manufacturing, distribution, and a micro-business. And the City Council established a maximum number for each of those categories. So for the micro-business itself, the council is allowing a total of three to open up or to be considered by the Planning Commission via CUP.
So, so where I was going with my question was, is not the number of, of the businesses that the council has approved by ordinance or municipal code or however they did it? But, so, so when the other applicant came in, it was, it was the same applicant, but it was two separate businesses. And within the, the structure itself, there was, you know, lockout, tagout, basically, between an employee going from distribution into dispensary and so they were, they'd have card fobs or whatever they are to allow access between. So if I am understanding right, the, the micro-business is, and there's only three allowed and this is, if this gets approved, now there'd be two left allowed for the city. But the, but the applicant, the, the people that choose to go the route of the micro-business have a smorgasbord of, of any of the, any of the types to put into the one CUP. Or, and maybe not any, but they can pick three of the approved cannabis businesses consolidated into one CUP.
So they can choose three of those four categories or have all four.
Okay.
So in this case, in addition to what the applicant is proposing, they could have chose, if they had a space large enough, to do cultivation as well.
Yep, and they're, and, and because of this uniqueness of this CUP being a micro-business, they don't have to have the internal, unless for internal operation, but from a municipal code, they don't have to have
Demising walls and
Yeah, divisions in the building to, to inhibit people from going from one part of the business to the other.
So in this case, it's one single CUP for the micro-business as compared to what you considered previously, which were two separate CUPs, but adjacent to each other in a building with a demising or a separating wall between the two. In this case, there, it's a micro-business, so they're having three uses in there and there, there is no requirement for a demising wall, it's one conditional use permit.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other staff questions from the commissioners?
I had a question. They were saying they're going to go upstairs, I guess, and I guess they're going to educate them on the product? Is that what it was?
So this, this leasable area has two, two floors. The second floor is a little over two thousand square feet and there would be vendors set up in a variety of booths to educate and inform the public. So that's a public space.
Is there elevators in that building?
I don't believe so.
Okay, how are the disabled going to get up there? Because believe me, there's going to be a lot of people that are disabled or ill and want
That's an excellent point. There are vendor spaces on the first floor as well and the building must comply with the ADA requirements, which are federal requirements.
Just, that was my question, is how the people with disabilities going to get up there?
They will have to comply, comply with all the current ADA standards for it.
Okay. We have all of our questions, the staff. All right, all right, we got it. Okay, so it's time for the applicant to come up if they so choose. Watch out, because there's been fifty questions so far.
Good evening. My name is Christopher Henry, I'm the applicant. And to address some of the questions, let's start with yours. The signage, as far as Movail Marijuana is the entity that we applied under. The actual name, we'll be filing for a DBA and doing business as Empire. That's our brand, which we're rolling out throughout Southern California as a whole and that's going to actually be what the signage depicts and what we present to the public, what the, what the public would know us as. So Movail Marijuana, you won't see it anywhere except unless it's in internal documents, IRS documents, things of that sort, corporate files. To, to jump straight into the ADA issue, what we've done with the second floor is, for educational purposes, what we're doing is, we have, dispensaries tend to have vendors that want to educate the public to be able to, to boost their sales, right? The way that they do this is, they educate them. So through the education process, they bring in flyers, pamphlets, displays, have informationals and things of that sort. So as well as the second floor, we have a, a section carved out on the first floor to the right of the building, the north side of the building, when you first enter, it would be to the right, where we're going to duplicate exactly what's on the second floor. That way, we meet the, the correct ADA standards. We're fully aware of them and we'll, we'll do everything to comply. The educational part, we're partnering with other, other businesses in the city like LA Fitness and Twenty-four Hour Fitness. And what they're going to do is they're going to come in and they're going to educate the public as well on proper usage of CBD products, because that's, it kind of falls under the, the umbrella, although CBD is now legal on a, on a federal level. It's still sold through the dispensaries as well. So they're going to be doing a portion on that. We have commitments with them to come in and do yoga sessions and things of that sort to show the proper administration of those, to help with different types of athletes and things of that sort. Raphael's question, wow, what was your question again that you had? Jumping anywhere. Correct, correct. No, by state regulations, we're not allowed to give out free samples. If a free sample's given, we have to send them downstairs and it would be done as a purchase. I would have to, would be required to pay the tax and they would have to pay the tax on us. So there's no free samples anymore, as you would see in some of the older, original dispensaries that, that came about prior to Prop sixty-four.
I have a question. They were talking about the disposal, I guess, of, I didn't know if they have, I didn't know marijuana had a shelf life, I guess.
Yes.
It does. How do you dispose of it?
Okay, so to comply with the, not only the city regulations, but the state regulations, the disposal has to happen in a marked bag. So the product, most of the product that will be disposed of will be product that sits on the shelf or displayed in, in the sealed containers, that would be in the pamphlet they're going to be handing out to you. That, as it ages and we dispose of it, has to be mixed up to fifty percent minimum with another type of material. So the state recommends either mixing it with grounded cardboard, which is the easiest, or grounded soil or some sort of other material, so that it's rendered unusable by anybody that may pull it out of a trash can. Once that is mixed and put into those sealed bags, then to comply with state law, we have to call out waste management, specific for cannabis waste pickup. They'll issue us a weigh ticket, although that weigh ticket goes into our, our logs and our, our, kind of our logs, I guess you would say. And from there, then that, that has to be reported and audited with the state as well, with, with the city. So the waste won't be, so in other words, you won't have a bag that cannabis waste is dropped into and is dropped in a dumpster in the parking lot. It has to be stored inside until your scheduled pickup or until you schedule a pickup from Waste Management and then a weigh ticket for that particular waste has to be issued and documented.
Okay, now that you gave us this pamphlet, I have another question.
Sure.
How much can somebody purchase and leave with? Because I noticed it's like eleven dollars a gram for this and then two hundred dollars an ounce. I mean, how much can a person
Okay, so if, if I'm not mistaken, and don't quote me on it, I believe it's up to two ounces is what the state law currently allows one individual to leave with at one given time.
They won't get arrested? No? It's okay for them to take it?
Yeah, it has to be within state guidelines. And to address your question about the twenty feet, our, our security guards will be patrolling. One of the, the, the primary responsibilities of the out, a security guard that's positioned outside will be to monitor the parking lot, to ensure that there is no laundering, that there is no consumption on sign going on in vehicles and things of that sort. The last thing we want is somebody hanging out outside counting people, scoping the building and things of that sort. So our, one of the requirements of the security company would be to ensure that the public is leaving the premise immediately upon exiting the building.
In conclusion, I want to thank you for letting us know that that's not going to be the name.
Yes, yes. No, we wouldn't do that.
Hope everybody else out there really follows suit, because that was a huge concern of mine.
Right, no, I, I can understand that. Those are any other questions?
Yes, I, I don't know if you can elaborate a little more on rotating vendor and how
Yes.
I, I'm concerned about the, what an employer, employee has to go through to work at, you know, a cannabis-related shop, the background check, you know, all the stuff. And how can we just bring in somebody from Twenty-four Hour Fitness and, you know, have them in there?
Right, so the vetting process is, anybody that's in the building that's working as a contractor or staff will have to undergo background checks and live scans to comply with the state. We're, we're fully aware of that. So whoever LA Fitness is going to give us as their liaison to be doing those services to the public will be required of the same constraints. They'll have to be cleared and we have to keep that on file. The rotation of the vendors will vary from day to day or week by week. Normally a vendor, if they, if they want us to carry their products, they want to also come in and do a, you know, a presentation to the public on exactly what it is that they're offering. So those will be scheduled for in advance. The vendors have the same, have to comply with the same type of requirements. We do, any of their sales staff or personnel that's out promoting their products also have to go through the live scan. So all of that will be kept on record and documented within our facility, available for audit at any time. But we will comply with all of those, all of those guidelines. The state kind of crafts out a very stringent policy on vendor access and how, what type of vendors and what the requirements are for them to be able to access your facility and do any type of work or services within that facility.
And the other, I thought I read somewhere that the employees had to be screened by our city manager? Or somebody from the city?
Yes, the city issues a, a license to, to every employee as well as the business.
So that will apply to the vendors also?
We're going to need to explore this whole vendor concept. There were some things mentioned tonight that caused us some questioning and concerning for, you know, yoga classes, for example, would not be a permitted use under the CUP.
Got it, okay, we can adjust that.
We're not really clear on what they want to do. The, the CUP restrictions are still in place as to what they are and if they're trying to go outside that scope, I think we're going to need to talk, talk a, a little bit more specifically with the applicant to make sure they understand the limitations of the CUP.
Did I understand that you said that once the marijuana reaches its expiration?
Yes.
And it, it's sealed in the bag, that sort of thing? Did you say that it was mixed with another chemi-
Did you say that it was mixed with another chemical that?
Yes, it has to be mixed with, and they don't specify exactly what you can mix it with. They give examples. So one of the examples that the state gives is, you could take grinded up cardboard and mix it with the cardboard, it has to be fifty percent, fifty percent minimum mix. That way, if somebody were to pull it out of a trash can, they can't go put it in a pipe or something and smoke it. And so we have to comply with those state guidelines when it comes to waste management and disposal.
Okay, so then it's not innate, then it's not, it's still, there's some, still some THC level to it.
There is still.
You just have to mix it with something to make it undesirable, or?
Right, correct. Yeah, there's not a way to really dispose of it unless you're incinerating it or something of that sort, to make it unusable. But what mixing it does is it deters a person from being able to readily just pick it up and smoke it or eat it or whatever it may have you.
I didn't know, I didn't want some crafty guy at waste disposal turning into a business owner itself.
Right, true. Very true.
Any other?
Yes, sir. Yes, Chair. Welcome to step two, because you're at step two. You're here to try to obtain a condition of approval, or use permit. And these are the questions that we're asking you, to see if you're gonna follow the law of the federal, state and ours, because we are thinking of our city, like many of us already mentioned, and we wanna hear what you have to say, and that's important to us. Okay? I like the seventy-five cameras inside and I like the twenty-five outside, so you're gonna have a view of whatever's in there, because I took five pictures of the place and I know what the place looks like, because I've been there three times, to really look at it, to examine what's around it. And I know there's businesses up the street, Best Western and everything across the street from it, and then there's two on the corner, Jack in the Box and Del Taco, on the other side of the business. And what I wanna know, if by any chance, if there's a crime that occurs in the facility of the area or on the lot, does our law enforcement have the, granted to be able to look at the surveillance tapes without having go through a process of getting a court order?
Absolutely, our security cameras will be interfaced with the sheriff's department here or with the local PD. We're working with the IT department to make sure we're in compliance of the proper gateways to allow access. If there's a crime that occurs within the vicinity or in the property, your staff will have direct access to pull video as needed, that's part of your code, and we will comply with that.
Great, thank you. My other one is always as odor control plan, because you're using carbon. Now, the question is, do you have already other dispensaries in other areas of the state?
Yes, we have quite a few cultivation, actually. And with the cultivation, you have a much stronger odor versus dispensing. Dispensing, there's not gonna really be any open marijuana. We will have packaging in the back, so you're gonna have the process of breaking it up, which is where we're gonna have an extensive amount of carbon filters. So with the carbon filters, so you get a better understanding of it, exactly how they work is, the carbon is what filters the smell. The use of the carbon filters creates a negative airflow and a negative air pressure within the facility. Utilizing that negative air pressure, you're able to pull all the air from the outside in. So when a door's opened, all that air is sucking in, so you never have smell that's leaking out of the building. Everything's getting filtered through the carbon filters and then released through the ceilings. If at any point in time, we do have odor issues, then we move to step two. Step two is a combination of ozone filters and a combination of hydrogen peroxide scrubbers. And those, it's a molecular, it's a molecular working filter that pulls the air in, it bonds the smells and the, to the, to the metals in it, and it helps reduce some of the odors. That's step two, if we have any types of issues. We've been very successful in various cities, in every city that we've operated, that we do not have any odor control issues. So I don't feel that we'll have any in this particular case.
My next question is, I know you're gonna be doing upgrades on the building.
Yes.
And you're gonna be replacing the glass to a double pane glass, because that's what I read. According to the chapter five, City Ordinance, they require you, or they require that no cannabis or anything will be displayed or seen through the windows. In other words, if I walk by, I should not be able to see anything on the other side of the glass, what's inside the dispensary or the vendors. So are you gonna darken the double pane windows?
Yes, what will happen is the double pane windows are being put in for energy efficiency, as well as security. Throughout that process, what you have on the first floor, there's actually a false wall, which is called out on the plans, if you look at some of the fine print, that will cover the bottom floor windows. So if you're walking around the building, those windows will be blacked out, they will, we wanted to keep the windows so the aesthetics of the building remain in place. And by adding the wall, the false wall inside, it gives us a level of security, also gives us state compliance, and it prohibits the ability to see into that window, straight into the dispensary. On the second floor, there will be no dispenser, no product visible, but what we do plan on doing is putting some of that, that film, it's a film that you can see out, it's a tint, but it's a series of small dots, and that will go on the building also. And that will help prohibit, if somebody were to, hopefully it doesn't happen, but say throw a rock or something like that, it would hold the window from shattering.
I have one more question. When you close at ten o'clock at night, or whenever the staff leaves and you're the last one to leave, how is the security from, on the other side of the glass, going to prevent somebody from breaking the glass and getting in?
So to prevent somebody from breaking the glass and getting in, our first line of security, we're gonna rely on is a nighttime security guard. We're gonna have twenty-four hour security on premise at all times. So that will be our first line of security. Being that we're near the freeway and highway, we've been talking with 3M, and they recommended that fine dotted film to go on, because it's also a vandal proof. So if somebody was to say throw a rock or shoot it with a BB gun or something like that, it would prevent the window from being broken. By the time police are dispatched, it would, it would hold the window together long enough to prevent somebody from being able to get through that window in a timely fashion.
You're not gonna have a gate or nothing on the other side?
We don't plan to have a gate, because on the bottom floor, there will be no exposed windows from the inside. All the windows on the inside will be four feet or above, and that will be on the right-hand side. On the dispensary side, there will be a false wall around the existing windows from the inside. So from the inside, when you're in, within the dispensary, you'll have the visualization that there's actually no windows.
Thank you so much for answering our questions.
Absolutely.
In the event of a break-in, and I'm just curious, is the product secured within the building, or is it still out on display?
No, so the product is secure within the building at all times. So in the dispensary portion, as you've seen in your handout, they are, the product is put into a airtight, smell-proof container. That's locked down to a table, which cannot be removed. At the end of every night, that product in there has to be removed, locked away, as well as a product that is behind the counters, that is dispensed out to the public once it's purchased. All of that goes into a secure room. So we didn't call out some of the security details, just, we don't need it available to the public. But in the secured room, which is in the micro side of the business, it's gonna be built as a vault. Within that room, there's gonna be multiple safes that will house the cannabis sat, that is to remain on site. Because it is a micro license, there will be a substantial amount at any given time of cannabis onsite as this is being processed there and packaged there and things of that sort.
So this is something that you have to open and set the place up each?
Correct, correct. So each day, they'll be required to come in, say, you know, thirty minutes before shift, load everything onto the carts, roll it into the dispensary, and then stock their backstock. The backstock is in a secured area as well, as you'll see a pass-through from a hallway into a security area before you can get into the actual dispensary area. So all of the product in that secured, I think it's called out of the storage area, will be, that's backstock for the staff. So as, as the public makes their purchases, then it will be pulled from backstock and then distributed once it's, once the purchase is made.
Now, in prior dispensaries, I was under the impression that when somebody goes, do they have to be buzzed in?
They will have to be buzzed in. So our security plan calls for a, like a traps-type access, right? Like you would find in a pawn shop. So instead of having a big cage and that big ugly deterrent that you see when you walk into a pawn shop, what we've done is our security plan calls out that the front door is interlocked with the dispensary door. So there can, there's no, there won't be an ability for somebody to do, say, a snatch and grab. In order to open that front door, the dispensary door has to be locked. And in order to open the dispensary door, the front door has to be locked. So they work together. So one would tell, door one will say, hey, I'm locked, you can go ahead and buzz somebody into this door. And door two will say the same thing, and all of that will be controlled by either security guard or the secretary that's checking in each customer.
Okay, I was just curious, because it is very close to the sixty freeway.
Yes.
And we have.
Big concern of ours.
Yes, a big concern.
Yeah.
Rightfully so, they can get out of town. Okay, that's it.
Chair, I got one more, oh, Mr. Harris.
The manufacturing part of your business, will you be actually manufacturing edible cannabis products, or will those be coming in from the outside?
The edible products will be coming in from the outside to stock in the dispensary. The only thing that's gonna be happening as of right now in the manufacturing side will be the actual packaging.
Packaging.
Right, so packaging of various flour into jars and then put into boxes and to be shipped and sort. And then we may do some joint rolling, some vape pen filling, but that's as far as we go, we won't be touching any type of edible products.
Thank you.
No problem.
One more. I took a picture of the back, there's a metal gate roller with the dumpsters at, is that where you're gonna be using, is that part of the building?
Yes, that is part of the building, and that back area that you see, kinda by that dumpster.
Right.
That area will be the shipping and receiving. So you see the whole area from where the light, the light fixture is right up through the top of the driveway, there will be, that whole entire side is gonna be gated. It'll have wrought iron fencing, there'll also be wrought iron fencing on top of the existing white cinder block walls with a, with a hook, the hook style, to prevent anybody from jumping down and getting immediate access. That area is for vendor pickup and trash disposal. So when a vendor arrives, they'll check in. Once they check in, they'll be given a ticket, a security guard will be dispatched to that side of the building, will open the gates and allow them access, whether they're loading or unloading or whatever may have, you may have.
So those plywood's will come off the wall?
Correct.
And then there'll be metal doors, probably with alarm systems on them?
Correct.
Yeah, because, I mean, I see everything.
Yeah, so those plywood's actually go to the electric room. So we're gonna isolate that electric room from the inside, so that there can be no access through the electric room into the facility. And once that's isolated, where the roll-up door is, there's a man door to the right of the roll-up door, that will be a solid metal door as well, that is alarmed and also keycard access only.
Great, I need to ask the question, because I, the public, the residents are listening, there's the public that are listening, and we want to ensure them that you're gonna be doing everything correctly according to what the staff put on the report.
Absolutely.
That's why we're asking the question, and I'm deeply grateful for you answering them, you know, and giving us answers.
Absolutely.
Okay, is there any more questions that we'd like to ask of the applicant? Thank you.
Welcome.
So at this time, now open the, for, open the public hearing?
I'm sorry, can I interrupt for just one moment? Relative to the question that was asked about people outside maybe potentially loitering, there is a section in our zoning code under the Cannabis Regulations, General Business Requirements, that states that you, they cannot smoke or consume products outside of the business. So I think that would give you more, it's not restricted to a particular area.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we'll now open for the public hearing. Do we have any public testimony?
We do, we have one. His name is Yakuba Brown.
Counsel, how are you this evening? My name is Yakuba Brown, and I am a resident of Moreno Valley for over fifteen, twenty years now. I have a youth organization that is here in the city of Moreno Valley called the Fiam Group. It stands for Family Is All That Matters. We cater to, we're 501(c)(3) chartered with the state and with the IRS since 2005, for tutoring, mentoring and physical fitness. Our understanding of the type of businesses coming into Moreno Valley and what they're required to do by the state and by the city is to give back portions of proceeds to nonprofit organizations. We were blessed to meet Chris and his partner, and we have had several conversations with regards to whom the entity that they are giving back to, what charitable entity that they're giving back to. With the expansion that we have with our organization, we service a little over three hundred and forty-two kids here in the city of Moreno Valley since 2010. I also have kids that are in Riverside, Temecula, Corona, San Jacinto, and a couple that are in Banning. The expansion that we've been planning, myself and my partners, over the past five to six years, although we have investors and we are using investor dollars, to be a charitable organization and have an entity give back to us to continue to sustain what it is we're doing in the community, is kind of vital to our expansion, even though it might not be a make or break. But we are absolutely for what it is they're doing, and we appreciate the offer to be the charitable event, to cover the guidelines from the state and the city with regards to the business that they're bringing into Moreno Valley.
Thank you for your participation. Are there any others?
No, sir.
Okay. Would the applicant like to address, address any of the comments there made by the public? Okay. With that, I will now close the public hearing and move on to deliberations. So, Commission, it's time to deliberate.
I'm just happy that, that name was clarified, and, it's not funny, I really do, I'm really happy about that. I was very upset when I came in. So, in the future, I kinda, to alleviate any of this, it would be nice if they did specify exactly what the name will be on the business itself, and that way, any confusion, any sleepless nights, would, you know, be alleviated. So I'm just happy with that, and I'm happy with everything, and I know that the staff makes everybody, and the city makes everybody comply with the rules, and I, I don't see a problem with it, you know, I'm for it.
Commissioner, your name?
Sure. No, I thank the applicant for coming up, and you really were very concise about answering some of our questions and alleviating some of our misconceptions. And I'm really happy to hear, this is the first one that I've heard about some charitable give back, I mean, this is fantastic. I'd say, spread that out, you know? There's plenty of youth groups and plenty of folks in Moreno Valley that are nonprofit and can use some, a business that's just willing to help the city grow from the immense amount of money that we know that's going to go into this business. So thank you.
Anybody else?
I think all my questions were answered, and I'm gonna vote for approval.
Yes, Chair. I want to address Tom Gerald's concern. This is why it's important that we, the commission, is, read over the staff and the chapters carefully, to ensure them that everything that we're gonna do is for their safety, our safety, because we're all residents here, we live here. And I like the odor control plan. I'm always gonna hit on that, because that, those words that are here, this system will, it doesn't say. those worries that are here, this, this system will, it doesn't say maybe, it's supposed to do something, will ensure that the odor absorbed by the dispensary are not detectable outside the premises, including the parking lot, public right-of-way, and adjacent businesses. That's very important to me, to know that that rule, it's in here. The other thing I like about this applicant's, um, um, case is the cameras. They're gonna be all over the place. So if there is a crime, they are giving permission for our deputies to go in and look at it and solve that crime, without having to go through the process of getting a, a court order. That's very important for us, to solve the crime as quickly as possible without the parade. The other thing is, you gotta be twenty-one and over. That's a must. So I understand about the hotel that's up the street that hosts activities. And yes, they are gonna be youngsters, they are gonna come out and use the fast food lane, McDonald's, the taco, and all that good stuff that's there. That's why it's important about the odor, because when they go by this building, they're not gonna smell it. And the other thing is that they're not gonna have a sign facing the street that's gonna say marijuana or marijuana. It's not gonna do that. So the kids are gonna go by like they've never been there before. That's a good thing. And that's why security is important, that they do their part. There's nothing wrong by being kind, but tough love is better, because that's what we want in the city of Moreno Valley. I'm glad that, that the Commissioner got the signed thing or the name, cause I had a little trouble with the first one. I didn't care about marijuana, because, you know, it, a business would say tires, food. I just looked at the name Movial. Movial belongs to us. I don't want that to be, to be mistreated. We're not a city of, you know, of doing things wrong. We're just trying to comply with the law that was passed by Jerry Brown and passed by the public or the residents of the city of Moreno Valley. We just want things to be fair. I like this project, because the applicant, he answered our questions. He was straightforward, and that's what I wanted to hear, the applicant to communicate with us. And he did a great job, and he answered my questions, and I'm grateful for him. And I don't know what's gonna happen to the project, but I do like it.
Um, I'd just like to say, um, I agree with Joanne and Raphael as far as the name goes. Uh, I went from thinking that this was gonna look kinda ghetto with the name Movial Marijuana to thinking, well, this is gonna be, uh, a really classy-looking, uh, building, um, with the name Empire on it, and, and I think it's gonna be a good project. Okay, I, I also, uh, I, you know, wherever you fall on the, uh, whole cannabis operation and that vote that went down on the state, that this is, uh, I am glad to see that this, uh, commercial project or property is gonna be put back into some use, and, uh, it's gonna get updated, and so that's good. It's gonna have job creation. It looks like, uh, the city and, and the staff is, uh, taking a fine-tooth comb through the municipal code and, and condition it appropriately. So do we have a motion from, uh, one of the Commissioners, what they wanna do?
I'll make the motion. I make a motion that we approve Resolution number two oh one nine dash twenty-six.
Do we have a second?
I second.
Okay, we have a, a first and a second. Commissioner Korzak with the first, and, uh, Commissioner Stevens with the second. Do we have a vote? Look at that, it's approved unanimously. So do we have a staff wrap-up?
Thank you, yes. The action taken tonight by the Planning Commission, uh, is an appealable action. Any interested party would need to file an appeal within fifteen days of this action. The appeal must be in writing directed to the Community Development Director, stating the specific reasons for the appeal along with the appropriate fee. Uh, if an appeal was received, the item would be agendized for a future city council meeting. Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right. Uh, moving right along now to the next item, which is item number two, a request for a conditional use permit. It's P E N eighteen dash zero two zero five for a seventy-eight unit transitional care housing facility or, and assisted living complex. Um, the applicant is A G S Development Services. Welcome to here, Steph.
Senior Planner Chris Ormsby will present the staff report.
Great, thank you.
Uh, Chair Sims and members of the Planning Commission, I do wanna acknowledge that the staff work on this project was completed by Kimberly Luna. She's an intern working with us. Uh, she's a graduate student at University of California Riverside. Unfortunately, she cannot be here this evening because of a conflict with the class, but she was looking forward to presenting to the Planning Commission. The applicant is requesting approval of a conditional use permit to allow a seventy-eight unit transitional care assisted living, uh, complex on a little more than a three-acre site. There are a few aspects of the use that I should highlight. The project, which is being called Horizons at Moreno Valley, will be for residents fifty-five or older. It will essentially be an independent living environment, but there will be assistance provided or available on the site. That assistance would include, uh, assistance such as daily living activities, bathing, dressing, and grooming, medication management, and reminders. In addition, there will be other services provided, uh, concierge services, which would include transportation to commercial centers, social activities, and, uh, an additional meal preparation. Also, there'll be some potential social events, exercise and wellness classes, uh, and so forth. The site is located on the south side of Box Springs Road, immediately west of Kenyon Springs Plaza, or west and north of Kenyon Springs Plaza. The adjacent plaza is starting to see some renewed economic energy. There's a Golden Corral under construction, and that will provide some opportunities for seniors, uh, to be close to, uh, some commercial options. As mentioned, the site is community commercial zoning now. It's in a location that really doesn't lend itself to commercial development, not being on a, a corner location and being sort of, uh, on Box Springs Road, which doesn't see the traffic levels of, of some of the other major commercial streets. Therefore, it lends itself to some alternative land use such as the one under consideration. And the assisted living facility is a permitted use with a conditional use permit. Uh, moving on to the site plan. The, uh, basically, it's, uh, seventy-eight, uh, units total. There are sixty-one-bedroom, uh, units and eighteen-two-bedroom. Uh, the site plan layout, there's one access point from Box Springs Road with the ability to circulate on the site. Uh, there'll be a number of amenities provided on the site, including a fitness wellness center, pool and spa, lounge and club room, and offices for the assisted living facilities or services. Regarding to the, with regard to parking, uh, the parking analysis prepared by the consulting firm of Environment Planning Development Solutions Incorporated concluded that parking provided is adequate for the site. Uh, this was based on Institute of Transportation Engineers Parking Generation, a document. A total of ninety-three parking spaces, uh, would be required, and ninety-nine are provided. The elevations provide a fair amount of variation and, and such in terms of the, uh, all sides. There's some use of stone accents and some variations in color. We did place a, uh, condition on the project to provide some additional detailing around certain windows, uh, for example, on the areas that project where the balconies are located. And, and just here, we provided the example as far as the materials, so that the colors actually, I think, are, are maybe more attractive than they are represented in the actual rendering. The project proposes numerous design and, uh, convenience amenities, as mentioned, uh, for this project. Uh, we already talked about the, the courtyard, which has a pool, spa, and some, some other, uh, recreational opportunities there. In addition, there will be, uh, community gardening and a, a dog-walking path for residents with pets along the very south edge of the property. Project has been determined, uh, to be qualified as a Class thirty-two categorical exemption under CEQA, uh, which is an infill exemption. Uh, because it does meet all of the conditions that are required for that particular exemption, the applicant did provide some considerable, considerable documentation of that for staff, and we worked with them to, uh, review that, and, and we concur with it. With that, then, the staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve Resolution two thousand nineteen dash twenty-five as recommended in the staff report. Just one additional comment, we did receive one phone call, just an inquiry with regard to the, uh, what the project was, that no concerns were expressed with the project. And with that, I'll open up the questions of staff.
Thank you. Uh, do we have, uh, questions by Commissioners or staff?
Um, I have one question, and, uh, under special conditions, uh, B page fifty-one. Any use, uh, which would cause sunlight to be reflected toward any aircraft engaged in initial straight climb, uh, to take off towards aircraft engaged in straight final approach. Um, I guess it's, I guess that's saying that when the construction is going up, the windows have to be, uh, built a certain way that they don't cause sunlight in order to ref- to reflect towards, I guess, March Air Force Base or anything like that. Um, I, I was looking for anything in the, in the building plans that showed any type of, um, building for, I, I've seen others where they said, yes, we're gonna use a certain type of window or that won't, uh, cause any reflections. Is, does this one have, does this project have anything like that?
Uh, this is actually a standard condition of the Airport Land Use Commission. The project was reviewed by the Commission. And in this case, windows generally wouldn't be considered reflective, solar panels would be. So if they were to add solar panels later, that would be something that we would have to, to possibly bring back to the Airport Land Use Commission. But generally, windows are, you know, if there was some reflectivity of materials being used during construction, as you mentioned, which is a good point, then that might be a consideration. But here, uh, based on our experience with Airport Land Use Commission, there would not likely to be any, any, any issues in that regard.
Oh, uh, there's a little speak, speak button on here, so if you guys will ever use that, then I can see who's in line. But that's okay. If you don't want to, that's also all right, too. But whoever wants to go next could go X. Uh, I was just wondering, how many of these units are going to be ADA, um, compliant?
For that, I'll defer to the, uh, the applicant, but they will have to meet the, uh, building code with requirement for ADA.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. I have a question. I went over and then I looked at it, and there is, from the curb, there's no way, there's no sidewalk, there's nothing there. I mean, you gotta park your car on the corner and then walk up to the project. How is that gonna be done? What are they gonna do in the front of, of the fence? Are they gonna put sidewalks? What, what are they gonna do? Are they gonna have the street and then a sidewalk?
Yes, uh, there will be sidewalk, as shown on the, I can see it on the landscape plan. So there'll be some, uh, generous landscape setback behind the sidewalk, appears to be curb-adjacent sidewalk. Uh, so that will all meet the city standards for the, uh, infrastructure.
Okay. And to my surprise, when I parked my vehicle, I didn't realize that I was parking on someone's property. I realized there was a mailbox there, and it was on someone's property, so I backed out. And I realized there's a house way in the back of an, of the, uh, of someone else's property. And I saw the fence, and then there's the fence towards the plaza. Before the fence towards the plaza, there's a gap in between the two fences. Is that part of the project? It's like a, it's like a driveway on the corner.
Well, I'm not sure if you're referring to the property line. There, there is a property in between this property and the, the multifamily under construction. Are you referring to the, the back of the site?
No, well, okay, if I, if I stood in front of the, the, the project to my left.
Okay.
My left, there's like a, a driveway, then, then there's the plaza. There's a gap in there. Is that part of the property that the, the houses are gonna be built on?
It's my understanding it, it would be, but we can, uh, we could take a look at the aerial photo here. But it, um, yeah, all the, the raw land up to the commercial center is part of the, this project. But the applicant may be able to shed some additional light on that.
Okay. Oh, there it is, okay. Okay, so, so I'm looking at the project, and, um, not with the house, but on my right-hand side, there's a gap in there on the project site, right there, there's a little gap. And there's a driveway that takes you back onto, um,
That's why you're talking there.
Um, Box Springs. So I, I just wondering, are they gonna use that gap all the way to the fence of the, of the plaza?
Am I, yes, it would extend all the way on the east side, um, to the plaza.
Okay, good. I just wondering that, that we don't leave that gap, and then in the future, we can't do nothing with it. You know, so, cause that's one of the problems that we have in Moreno Valley. We have so many little lots. Okay. I commend the report, because I have a father that's disabled and living in Puerto Rico, and he's been taken care of. So when I started to look at this project, I wrote down, what is it? What are we building there? Because I saw stalls, swimming pools, I mean, it's a lot of good things that my father don't have. So I was wondering, how do you take someone that's this, you know, that has that disability? So I understood by you now mentioning, it's like a two-phase, independent, cause I have, uh, in-laws, my sister-in-law, they live in Florida, and they live in a two-bedroom apartment, but no one's taking care of them. But everybody else outside of that, someone stay. So I understand now what the project is being built, how it's being built, and that's a good thing. And I'm glad it goes down to fifty-five, you know, instead of sixty-two or sixty-five, I mean, you know. But I'm glad, um, I look forward to it. I, I, I thank the fire department for being involved, once again. I like the word, um, that little, that little word there, um, lockbox or whatever it is, that little box, is there also to ensure that if anything happens in that building, they'll be able to get in and help the seniors. Because, once again, I believe that our seniors in the city of Moreno Valley is our jewels. I call them jewels, because they have taught me personally how to do things to be where I'm at today. So in return, I read this report in their behalf to make sure everything's done safely for them. And I'm glad that the fire department is involved in all this, too. Really, thank you.
Any other Commissioner questions of staff? Okay, at this time, if the applicant would like to, uh, come up and, uh, give a presentation or address the Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commission Jeremy Kraut, uh, applicant's representative. Thank you for, uh, having us here tonight and hearing the project. We're thrilled to be in front of you to present this project, to, one that is, I think, is, you're hearing from, uh, your Commissioner and probably from, uh, other people in the community, something that's needed with the, the demographic change that I think every area is, is facing the aging of population. So, uh, we're, we're thrilled to be here, and, and we've worked really hard with the staff. We wanna thank your, your staff, who's, uh, attentive, diligent, and, uh, very responsive in, in a process like this that, um, you know, everybody has to go through to get, uh, something built. So we're, we're thrilled to be working with your team. Um, I, I, my presentation doesn't have a whole lot more to offer beyond what, uh, you heard from your, your staff. I accept that, I just wanted to add that, yeah, th- this project does have, uh, and I, maybe there is one, uh, is there a clicker over here? Oh, excuse me for a moment. Um, a name that we think might be, uh, appropriate for this, we really, um, this is a name that's being used in other communities. Uh, they have another site in, in Calabasas that is, um, I think, well-received. They have another site in Calabasas that is, I think, well-received up there, and excited to bring this brand to the community. We talked about the site for the moment here, and I think the one thing I just wanted to add, as far as some of the assisted living services, which may speak to what you were talking about, some of the benefits that community members would have, or residents would have here, really, the elements that people do need as they age, and it's helpful for residents that may be here, it's related to, really, the assistance with daily activities, the bathing, dressing, grooming. It's a real benefit to have that onsite, in-house, essentially, to be able to offer that to the residents. Meal preparation assistance, medication management, reminders, all those things that, you know, it just is a little bit harder as we age to administer and to keep track of. So those are very helpful. Transportation and companionship to appointments are obviously important, too. Not everyone will have the benefit of a family there to help one of the residents in many ways, and it's nice that those services could be offered onsite, so they could continue to have a life, relatively free life in this capacity. So social activities are obviously really important to communities like these, to encourage people to stay longer. I think the more they offer in a community, the more that people want to stay there. So to that end, they really encourage these social activities. And then, of course, you know, housekeeping and other elements to assist with, it's, you know, not all the times is it easy to deal with the trash and other things that you, we have to deal with on a regular basis as you age, so. And then, basic first aid, of course, is important in the area, or in this community. Really, our intent to design, our architect and engineer are here in the audience. Do you have any specific questions about materials? These are some examples of some of the projects the architect has worked on. And then, we, like you heard from your staff, all the amenities that are onsite, so don't need to go into that in a lot of detail, but Commissioner Harris, I believe, asked the question about ADA for, relative to the units. All, 100% of them are ADA compliant in terms of being adaptable to, so not all residents will have ADA needs, but they, each of them, each of the units could be adaptable to have lower sinks or lower countertops. They all have that ability to do that. So as the resident's needs are determined, either through the signing of a lease and explaining the needs, they can be adapted to that person's needs, or if they, through their term or living at the facility, they become disabled, they could adapt them very easily. And then, beyond that, just like any facility like this, the restrooms and other public space, or quasi-public spaces are already ADA compliant in terms of anybody that comes in would have to be able to have access to them. So I don't know if there are any other questions that you want me to address, but happy to answer any, and thank you for your time.
I do. This is a, so how many, an operation like this with, what'd you say, 78 dwelling units or living spaces there, what kind of staffing is involved in this and the shifts? Is this a 24/7 staffed operation and kind of, what do you think as far as staffing?
Yeah, so there's a couple, yeah, it's a good question. So if we have a floor plan on one of the, do you have a floor plan, by chance? I don't think I included it in mine. Yeah, I did not. Yeah, I don't think I had a floor plan, but in the floor plan, if you have the plan package in front of you, there's, it might be easier, oops, I'm sorry. Let me stop pushing buttons and all. You'll see a number of uses within the building, so you have managers, you have people that are in the leasing side of the facility, you have catering in terms of areas for food preparation and for receiving of food that's coming in. So there are a number of people that would be there. In addition, for a lot of these services that are being offered, not all of those are onsite staff 100% of the time. They'd be coming in as needed, so as the needs come up for each of the residents, they may be coming in on a more frequent basis. So at, like, the first occupancy, maybe 20% of the people will need some of these services, so they'll come onsite to provide those services on a regular basis. And then, maybe over time, the residents would change and have more needs, so they'd be coming more frequently. So, you know, as far as number of people, it'd be typically about five people there onsite for daytime, and then there would be 24/7 for somebody there to be available in case somebody needs that. But then, they can also call, they'll have emergency lines, not just for emergency personnel of the city or hospital, other staff, but it'd be also for non-emergency, emergency, I guess, you could say, just urgent needs, where you'd have help with some of the things that are listed there that they could call on, and those people would have access to come into the facility to provide those.
Thank you. Any other questions of applicant?
At some point, would some of the residents be, they get seriously ill or more ill, and they're not going to really recover? Are they going to be sent to, like, a skilled nursing facility?
So, God, you brought that up. This is considered not a skilled nursing, so that there is not a nursing personnel or nurse or a medical professional on staff to provide that. They could come onsite to assist with any medical needs, but there isn't, this is not a skilled nursing. So, yes, if the needs were great enough to require an actual skilled nursing facility, which is more on the medical side of the range of housing, they would potentially have to go somewhere else if they could not provide that in this facility. But they could also, if there's ability to bring, you know, a nurse in or somebody with medical professional ability, they could come into the site to provide certain of the needs that the resident may have.
And just to educate the public, what does transitional care mean exactly?
The idea in this is that people that, there's skilled nursing, there are a number of different housing types for senior, for people with certain needs, especially in the senior citizen range of people, and those are related to use, or services like these. So in this case, not everyone is going to need these services, and not everyone has to buy those services, I guess you could say, when they come into the facility. As compared with a full assisted living that has 100% of that provided 100% of the time, meaning that if you rent or lease in the facility, they have to use those services, they're paying for them right out of the gate. Here, they don't have to pay for it, they could opt out of it, or they could opt into it. So it's a balance, because the full assisted, where you have to, assisted living, where you have to buy those services, you're going to be paying a lot more. So this is a more affordable option for people that may need some, but not all the services, or they transition into those services over time, and they can opt in for that.
So this is kind of like a senior apartment complex with a smorgasbord of options that they need to use or not use?
Yeah, so it's a little different in the, in terms of the layout. So a typical senior apartment community would not have all the other functions onsite. So on the first floor of this facility, they have a lot more functionality that are providing the ability to provide, the services like these could be offered on an immediate basis. A senior apartment community would be much like any other apartment community you walk into, they just have a lobby with maybe a leasing person that could greet you, and then the amenities that are related to apartment community. This is different in that there are other functions onsite. As you walk in, you'd have all those other things that allow this to happen, so it's a little different.
Commissioner Harris?
What is a large butler kitchen?
So, that's kind of in that category about the meal preparation and assistance. Every resident, or residence, I should say, has a kitchen. It's not going to be, these are smaller units for people that would desire that sort of living, not, you know, these aren't going to be grandiose kitchens for every person to have, you know, this luxury apartment experience. They will be really nice and accommodated well for the residents, but they won't have a grandiose kitchen. So for people that especially are needing meal preparation assistance, with a facility like this that'll have a company coming in and assisting with that, they need an area, especially if they're providing it for half majority of all, or all the residents, they'll need an area to bring the food in, to lay it out, and to prepare it, and bring it up to the units, and that's what this is. So it's not a, it's not a commercial-grade kitchen, unless I'm mistaken, yeah, it's not a commercial-grade kitchen where you're going to have...
But they will be able to do some meal prep right on site.
Yes, exactly, that, exactly.
Like a caterer could bring in the food?
Exactly.
Big stuff, big trays, and then parse it down into individual servings.
Right, right.
Any other questions?
I have a question. So kind of, I'm glad you're here, and I'm glad you're answering questions, and I feel just like some of the commissioners, I believe is, or I, kind of I believe now, it's like an upscale senior center for residents, for those to live, because everything that you mentioned is contract. The nurse comes in, the doctor comes in, the food comes in, everything's contract as they need it.
A la carte, there.
Okay? So, so it's like a high-end, again, apartments for anyone that's 55 and over, and also gives the option for assisted living for those that want to live in a nice neighborhood, in a nice apartment with a lot of nice stuff, okay? So that's what I feel it is. And there's nothing wrong with that as they need it. Like you said, they probably save money, because with my dad, everything's included in one price, and, you know, but he needs that assistance. There's other people that may not need that assistance for the next five or 10 years yet, you know, just like my sister-in-law's, and they're 95, and they're doing pretty well without this assistance. So for those that decide to rent one of your places, and they've lived there for the next 10, 15, 20, 30 years, and they get that old, they'll have that assistance there. But to me, it sounds like a high-end apartment or senior place, and that's okay. It's a good project, it's going to be put in the right place, it's going to be good for the City of Moreno Valley, they're going to have another option. But it's not more for the assisted living, it's more for independent than assisted living, okay? That's the way I feel now, reading and listening to everyone here. Like I said, it's a nice project, it's going to be a nice area, it's going to fill up that lot with something great, instead of seeing the dirt and the weeds, and I'm happy, you know? Are we going to have security cameras throughout the place?
So there will be a security protocol to have secure cameras and personnel to monitor the site. I don't have the number of cameras on my...
That's okay, no, I'm just asking the question, is there going to be security for the 55 and over, okay?
Absolutely.
Yeah, and again, we're not going to have anybody 24 hours, nurse, nothing like that, doctor. I know you're going to have a reception that's going to be there 24 hours, right?
Yeah, but they, yeah, so when you're talking about medical professional, that is now getting into that skilled nursing, so that's a different type of use than this one would be. So that, yeah, assisted living doesn't have that use or that type of personnel onsite. The people that have, they may have some basic training, especially on first aid administration, but, and then administration of medication reminders and that sort of thing, but they're not the doctors that you're referring to, that would be in that skilled nursing and other similar categories.
So if a tenant calls the reception for assistance, maybe she fell, she's able to go to the phone and call downstairs and ask for help. Does that person go upstairs to see what's going on by knocking on the door, or do they dial 911 for them?
Likely, in an emergency situation, that would be a 911 call. That's...
All right. I just want to make sure that I understand the project, and I do. And like I said, if I was the one that wanted to live in a nice place like that, and I was 55 and over, and I got tired of cutting grass, that's where I'd go, because you have everything that I need. And eventually, one day, I'll need assistance, and it's there. So, good luck.
I have a question.
I think there is Commissioner Harris.
No, I just, if they have questions.
I have one quick question. When my father was at that point where he did need assisted living, well, do you contract with the VA at all? Because I know that the VA pays for the veterans quite a substantial amount for their care. Do you do that at all?
That, I don't believe that's the model here. I mean, the VA, I think that's a very specific category of provision of services. I'm familiar with facilities that are 100% VA-related, so they, but I know that's not what we're talking about here, I'm just, that's not in this case, as far as I know, as far as...
No, because in Sun City, I was, looked at a place, and it wasn't just for veterans, it was for everybody. They just happened to have, the staff had told me that because he was, you know, a veteran, World War II vet, he was entitled to a certain amount for assisted living, which was quite a large amount. It was like $4,000 or over $4,000, $5,000. And they contracted that way with the VA. So I was just wondering if that's something you guys did, because I know we have a lot of military in our city.
Yeah, it's a good question. I don't know if that's been explored at this point, I don't think they're excluding it, but I mainly was referring to, I've worked on another project that is 100% veterans, but I know that's not what you're referring to in this case, it's just something that I'm familiar with, I'm not familiar with that situation.
My question would be, it sounds great, this is fantastic. I remember that when somebody else came in with something similar, say, wow, we need this in Moreno Valley. My question would be this, if a person came in 55 and older and said, I want the bare minimum, smallest place, versus the person that came in and got the fully-loaded version, is there a ballpark figure between the lowest and the highest? And as they go through the meld of services, are, I guess it's a bifurcated question, are those services offset through Medi-Cal, medical services, you know, Blue Shield, Blue Cross, you know, that sort of thing? So bottom line, what they would get if I came in at 55 and said, I want to, just give me a room, or the guy coming, I want, I want the Cadillac with all the bells and whistles?
I don't have rates on that, but it certainly, so the bare bones, I think, one thing that I'd want to point out, to address the point about, is this the same as senior apartments? Again, these are, these units are designed to be supplemental, or I guess complementary to the uses onsite, so not all of the units are going to have, again, this bigger kitchen that you'd expect in a normal senior apartment that's fully independent living. You're going to, they get to benefit from the other facilities onsite to help reduce the need for bigger kitchens or other bigger uses, so they could, they have other facilities onsite that provide that. In addition, they may be paying, it's a nicer facility, so they may be paying more if it was a like-for-like senior apartment, where a senior apartment with nothing available to it, and this senior, in this facility, transitional senior care that has options that they can utilize onsite, and, again, ramp up from no need to some need. So they, because this is just, there's going to be more convenience and other options available to somebody. So they, if that was, but there isn't really, one thing I wanted to point out in my presentation that I didn't yet, is one thing that is really important, is there really no, very few or no available options for seniors in this area. I've got a list of them, and there's, a lot of them are about, single-family homes have been converted to allow for multiple people to be onsite in assisted living fashion, and so there's just really not that many around. There, a lot of them are in different cities, and what are available are pretty limited. So, you know, having that option in the area is important. So it's hard to compare exactly what the price range would be, and so what, there's going to be a testing of the market, to answer your question, to find out what exactly what the rate would be. But certainly, somebody, as you get increased needs, even somebody that is in a wheelchair that would have more intensive needs from bathing and clothing and food prep, you know, the price range may go up from there, but that also could be supplemented by insurance or other means that a person would have available to them. But certainly, the medical side, that's definitely covered by healthcare, and some people have more long-term care insurance, but some people haven't paid for that, so there would be a balancing of what they could purchase and have available to them.
Well, I guess what I was driving at is a person comes in, and I would imagine they have some certain, I see a lot of amenities here, and there are some basic things they would get just for staying there. And then, as they stay there, they, you know, their needs could increase. So then, I guess, from there, at the basic, at the bottom level, and Mr. Johnson is going around, saying, no, Mr. Johnson, you don't have that service available to you, we have to go to the management office to add that service. I take it it would be something like that, then?
That's true. So they would, a number of the things, like, there's social activities, and there is transportation, not everybody needs that, but that is obviously an important thing to have available, medication management reminders, there's, there'd be some basic offering of that, but then if you have, you know, somebody... But then if you have, you know, somebody coming into, to the unit to help them with administering, that may be an extra charge, but it is gonna be a menu available and certainly the market may dictate, um, some of this actually becoming a, a base level offering and some of it may be, you know, price that, you know, people really want and they're willing to pay something for, or the insurance is able to pay for it. So, yeah, there, there will be some base offerings, it's different than just a standard apartment community and that's, that's an important part of this facility.
And I, I guess my last question would be, um, in dealing with some seniors, uh, myself, um, and volunteering, there's some seniors that would be, um, sometimes unsafe to themselves, leaving the gas on, you know, maybe leaving the water running, that sort of thing. And, uh, so I guess what safety measures would be in place for seniors that would be living there that could possibly cause harm to themselves or someone else?
Uh, so one element that's important is, you know, social activities are both a function of providing people a network or community to, to, um, integrate themselves into, but also way to, for, for safety measures. So, you know, they, they do have regular people, that, regular occurrences to bring people out of their units to come into the more common areas. If they see people not attending those, they'd, I think, alert somebody to go check on that, on the person. In addition, with people on, on staff in the facility that see people coming and going and, um, because there are more common areas and it brings people out of their unit, if they don't see people coming, they'd go and check on them. Um, so I think there are a lot of those elements that are kind of built-in safety measures because of the community that's formed in these facilities. And then, yeah, if, if they don't see people coming in and out on a regular basis, I think that would really alert staff to go and check on them on a regular basis to see that would happen. So, and then obviously when people have some of the, the services that are for medication reminders and others, then that's, that is somebody going to the unit to, if they're not coming out, to take their regular medication, to go check on them, to, um, provide that. So, um, then beyond that, you know, there, obviously there's building measures that, you know, from fire suppression and, and alerts, you know, that it's gone, it'll be going through the fire, uh, plan check process to ensure that each unit has all the, obviously the fire and life safety measures that are, uh, would be expected.
I have one more, because he brought up a, a concern. Is the building open twenty-four hours or is they're open and closed? Open at eight, close at nine and no one can come out? Because I think of, um, seniors, and it don't have to be seniors, let's say fifty-five and over, may have dementia.
Yeah, it, so that'd be an important point, this is not a, a memory care facility, but yeah, but, yeah, right.
They're living there and it occurs while they're living there for five years.
Right, no, yeah, they're.
What happens while they're wandering up and down the hallway?
So I, I guess the important thing, yes, there would be a, a locked down point, so like early, you know, late at night to, or at some point during the evening to early in the morning, it, it would be locked, so not everybody could, any, anybody in the public could come into the facility, they'd have to buzz in and get, you know, admitted to, to allow in. As far as the residents, this doesn't have a, a, um, a lockdown like the memory care, um, uh, facility might. So like if, you know, some, if a resident wanted to leave, they could. And so, um, you know, that would be obviously imperative for the staff and residents to recognize when somebody's going that direction and becoming a danger to themselves or to the community, uh, to, to come out of there. So they would be, they'd have to be referred out of the facility into, um, somewhere where that could accommodate that, uh, type person so that they, they wouldn't be a, a safety concern.
So you, you would recommend to the, to the tenant, uh, uh, an alternative to have that care somewhere else, not in this facility?
Yeah, they'd, they'd have to, they'd say that this isn't, this is not safe for you to be in this facility, they'd have to for them out. Or, you know, they, if there's, if they're on the, I guess, a, a line very close to or not, but not fully over into full dementia, you know, there could be some of these services that could be provided if they don't have a family member that, uh, to be with them from, from a safety perspective.
Thank you for your answer.
Any other questions of?
I don't have a question, I'm just gonna make a comment, like somebody perfectly healthy like myself, and I'm well over fifty-five years old, if I wanted to just not have to do anything and, and just be cared for and pampered and have all the amenities that I wanna have and, you know, I can live there. And like Rafael says, I, nobody's gonna put a, a requirement on me whether I could come and go, right?
Yeah.
Or I have to stay there and, and let's say, I mean, it's not gonna be like a lockdown, I mean, I can come and go and live my life and, you know, just have, enjoy the pool and spa and have somebody make my meals and, you know, it's not totally just for people that are, you know, ill, it could be for somebody that just wants to live their life out without having all the stress and everything.
That's correct.
Right, so that's what I wanted to say.
You know, this sounds very analogous to the Air Force Village West, I think it's called Alta Vista now, but this is on a much smaller, uh, kind of scale, but there, it's for the, all the, uh, military folks. You can move in, you can get like a three or four bedroom, single-family home and, you know, when you decide, it's for seniors. And then once you scale down, you go, oh, I only want a condo, then you move to the condo, oh, that's too much, then you can go to the apartment. And if you don't like the apartment, then you can get into something more like this transitional, all the way to the, you know, full-on assisted living, you know, medical care type thing. And then they can, you check out and you go over to the VA, you know, so it's a full service over there, but. This somewhere, this is somewhere in that kind of spectrum of, uh.
Um, if, if this project were to be approved tonight, when would you be prepared to start the project?
Uh, so as you know, with the construction permitting process, at this stage for CUP, we get to a certain engineering and, and architectural skill and detail. Next step, if, if approved, would be to go into the construction design detail, which takes a couple of months at least to just prepare the plans. Uh, once those are submitted to the city, go through the plan check process, we'd estimate that to be anywhere between three and four months or something to get to permits and then construction after that. So I, I think, you know, they're, they're anxious and interested to move forward. And, uh, you know, if everything were to run smoothly through that, uh, process, we'd, um, you know, it'd be a, probably, um, you know, it's less than a year construction or about a year construction effort, so that's, um, that'd be about the rough timing.
So there could be shovels in the ground within five months?
Um, we'd love for that to happen, yes, that, that's possible.
Thank you.
Okay, any other, uh, Commissioner questions of the applicant? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And then, uh, so this time, uh, we can now open the, uh, uh, public hearing, do we have any public testimony?
Yes, sir, we have Mara Swatz.
Sweets, that's okay, it's my handwriting.
Thank you.
No problem, Mara Sweets, and I'm a California real estate broker. And I'm here to represent the estate of Edie Mae Cranton, who owns the property of a single-family residence right next door to the applicant's proposal. And I wanna make it really clear, we're not here for or against the property development, but what I am here for is, um, Edie Mae. She's a ninety-six-year-old woman who lives in the home right now with a seventy-year-old caregiver. And she's been in the home since the early seventies, her husband had the home built for her. Um, she is a paralyzed, um, let's see, non-ambulatory dementia resident. And the trustee of the estate would like to see her grandmother live out her days in that home. And only the good Lord knows how long that will be. And so what she is asking for, and she hasn't had any specific problems with this particular development, but in the past, that the owner is entitled to a certain amount of rights as a property owner, we all know that when we own property here in California. But I'm only here to talk about one of those rights. And that right is her right of enjoyment. Her right to live out her days there without water being cut off and power, because it has happened in the past. She is the only single-family resident left on that side of the block and there's been a lot of development over the years. And she has lost, most recently, power literally all day. And so we're not talking about an inconvenience here, we're talking about a life and death situation. So all we request and wanna know from the applicant is what are they prepared to do? So power does remain on as they do their development, um, um, with the property. That's all the trustee would like to know, is that her grandmother was going to be able to be taken care of with running water and power in her home during this year. Not to mention the traffic that I would, I would assume that construction trucks will be there, coming and going, possibly blocking her entrance. And so we'd like, um, the panel to address that so that she can feel assured, um, that that's not gonna happen. My role here is, since the development has happened, the trust, the trustee has been inundated with calls about the property and she can't handle them. So she brought me on as agency to, to field those calls and to, to talk to people that are interested in purchasing the property, moving her out or whatever the case may be, and that's not happening right now. So I'm taking those calls and I'm fielding those calls and she invited me to this meeting because she's concerned about how the construction of this development is gonna affect her daily life.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
So, uh, would the applicant like to address any of these, uh, concerns just raised?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Jeremy Crowe again. Uh, it'd be possible to bring up the aerial just to, uh, show the adjacency so we can reference that. I, I think her concerns are, are well put, I mean, I'd be, any, um, neighboring property mine, I'd wanna make sure that they're considerate of and not going to affect my life, you know, if I, especially if I've been in a place for a number of years. Uh, so as you can see in the aerial, the outline of the, the parcel there, there is, uh, a space between that part, property and her, and the, the home we're referencing and then further, uh, if you go along Box Springs to the west, the access is shown there, um, uh, quite a ways over. So the, the project would not cause any imp, impedance to access to the site, there was, uh, everything is planned on site, we're not requesting any off-site grading, uh, we're not, uh, planning for any severance of utilities that are being provided to that home. So that obviously would be, uh, not feasible and not something that we'd wanna do. So, um, certainly that concern is valid and I know that, uh, the city has, uh, a number of ordinances, uh, that relate to noise control and, and then air quality management district has a number of requirements from air pollution and, and all of those have to be met and are, are included in the conditions of approval and through any permit that has to be obtained for, for, uh, construction. So, um, all of those would be important considerations.
Okay, thank you.
I, I guess what she's asking there, and I, I would kind of expound on that. With all things being equal and everything going well and fine and construction is fine, but then Plan B, something happens. What's Plan B to take care of that resident?
Uh, so there is a onsite, uh, so a contractor, general contractor would be, uh, a point of contact that would have, um, on file with the city as well. So if there was something that happened on site and there was a call, um, usually goes first to the city. Uh, if something happens, that, that's normal, at least in experience with construction. The city would have the contact information of the, uh, the contractor and people on site to be able to say, something happened here, fix this. And so that would be an immediate thing that would happen, uh, that's what normally would happen there or code enforcement. If they, if there was some issue that was happening, they, that would be, would be involved as well. If it was an ongoing issue or something related to dust or water quality, there's, um, you know, if there's dirt spilling out into the street, but more specific to your concern, if there's something that's happening to utilities, I guess, if that's maybe what you're referencing, like the severance of a electrical line or something like that, then normally that, they, they call, uh, the electrical company, they, they call the city or they go straight to the city and then they, the city has contact information for the person on site. Um, but, you know, I think that's, certainly if, if there is a desire of the, the neighbor to have the name and, and contact information of the contractor on site, I think we'd be certainly willing to do that to ensure that they, they have immediate access to that person on a regular basis to go one step further, so they don't have to go through one step removed from just calling up the contractor saying, hey, you just turned off my power or something like that happened and we can, that can be addressed right away.
I guess I was thinking about something more immediate, maybe a generator, ready to go, boom, hook it up to the bus, power comes right back on until the city gets out there right away, water on site, ready to go. You know, just in case something does go, you know, anything, uh, transportation or whatever, I mean, just in case. You know, just something more immediate, and I'm not saying to develop that plan right now, but, you know, it's a concern that's been risen and, and, and I guess because of her age and her condition, it'd sound like the, could have something ready to go. I mean, like right there, instead of waiting for the, the city to come out and fix it, instead of waiting for water to be provided, instead of waiting for something to come out, to have something ready to go, it's just a thought.
Well, it typically from, my past experience working in, in doing development stuff, that, I mean, it is, there are accidents that happen and utilities get cut or water lines get, uh, break and so forth, but, um, you know, typically if there is gonna be a shutdown of electrical to do a tie-in or something like that, that there, there is pre-notification and I would assume that the, uh, and I assume is a loosely used word, but the, the general contractor, the, the, the engineer and the, and the contractors would be working with the appropriate utility companies to pre-plan those and provide whatever the appropriate, uh, you know, at, at a minimum notification to, that there's gonna be a certain scheduled outage and, and then that, you know, it would depend on the developer and the relationship they have or the owner of that property would be as a, as a general utility user, be required to have to provide for that scheduled outage. Because typically there is rules that for allowing that to happen.
Question, Chair. Since you heard the residents', um, concern and you have a general contractor that's gonna be on-site during the project, just a recommendation, because you only gotta worry about one house, that's the beautiful part about it. Have your general contractor introduce himself to them and maybe exchange phone numbers. So with the commissioner mentioned, Plan B will be ready to assist someone that wants to live out their dream in that house, you know what I'm saying? So that's important, because they're gonna go through changes with the construction and everything already. So we just wanna be development-friendly to everybody, so just keep that in mind, thank you so much, thank you.
Okay, are there any more comments?
We have one more, Aurora Johnson.
Hi, thank you for allowing me to speak. Um, I'm actually my grandmother's trustee, um, I've been in court, but that's not it. Um, the construction that is currently in production on the right-hand side of my grandmother's house, um, her electricity has been cut off since they've started construction, anywhere from ten to fifteen times. It's from ten in the evening until eight in the morning. Um, she's, when I say she's incontinent, that means she doesn't have control of her bowels. When I say she's not ambulatory, that means she doesn't walk. She does, the, her caregiver is her son, her youngest son, he's seventy. He has five children under the age of thirteen that are living in the house with her. He also has, um, his wife who is helping take care of her, that's their job, they take care of my grandmother. Um, so my concern is when you have water and electricity cut off fifteen to twenty times or more during construction, that's an issue, especially if during that time she goes on herself. Because we have to shower her and clean her up. And all I wanna know is, how can we keep that from being consistently happening? Okay, I'm not against the construction, I'm not against anything, I just wanna know, I wanna make sure that somebody who's ninety-six and can't do anything for herself has access to water twenty-four hours and has access to electricity twenty-four hours. This, um, past winter was long and cold. We were twenty to fifteen degrees colder than normal and her heating was shut off. So that's what I'm concerned about, that's what I'm concerned about, that's the electric and the water, thank you.
Chair, if I might, um, I'm assuming that, uh, we have.
Chair, if I might, I'm assuming that we have the resident's contact information on those green sheets. If we don't, I'll ask you when we finish here to please make sure that we have that. The issues that are being raised, brought to our attention are construction-related, not use permit-related, so they're, they're an issue down the road. We want to make sure that this other, this one that's actively going on, that we're, we're hearing about, the right people, it gets in the right people's hands so that we can address this. If it's been cut off 10, 15 times, I certainly would want to know why. But it's not something that this board can handle or fix. What we're faced with is just the, whether or not this use can be conditioned on this property. So the resident's concerns are valid and we want to address them, but we want to make sure they get to the right people to address them.
So is that something you'll look, look into?
So I just want to make sure that we have their contact information.
Or whoever you have to do.
It, it appears that we don't have their numbers. So if, if you wouldn't mind making sure we have those on those cards, we'll follow up with you on that.
Okay, thank you. Any more comments?
No, sir.
Okay, at this time I will close the public hearing and open it up for Commissioner deliberations on the matter.
I'll start, sir. I like the project. I like what the, I like the project where it's going to be put at on Box Springs. It's going to do wonders in that neighborhood. I like the way the, the, the bricks, the, the, the paint, everything. Everything is going to look good. It reminds me where my in-laws live in Florida, where residents can rent, but also have an opportunity to be assisted. So I hope when this project is done, it'll meet Joanne's standard of having a high-end place to live, because I think she deserves something like that in the future. You know, I know she's taking care of her mother, so I know about caretaking. You know, so it's important that you keep your promises. There's 136 conditions. And like the city man, city attorney mentioned, we're only here for one thing, but just remember, be development-friendly, that's important for everybody around the neighborhood. And thank you for being here in Moreno Valley.
Anybody else like to deliberate or entertain a motion?
I, I think it's a wonderful place and option for people like me to be able to get pampered. And so I don't, I, I like it. And I know that that area there has been vacant for a long time. And it's, it's going to look really nice. So I don't have a problem with it at all.
Yeah, I, I support the project as well. I think it's a, I think it's good. I think we're finally seeing some development along that road. You see the apartments are well underway to the, to the west of this. And hopefully this re, reinvigorates the Canyon Springs Plaza into, you know, a more robust commercial center. And I, I hope the applicant, if this is approved, I hope the applicant and the owner, ownership over there and all the consultants associated with the project and future contractors will address their neighbors. That sounds like a very valid concern and it needs to be addressed. And that's ridiculous if you've gotten impacted that severely by the other one. And I think we heard from city attorney that they'll give them your address and that'll be, you know, look into that. I can't guarantee what the outcome of will be, but I think you made your point very well to the applicant here. If this is approved, you should be getting a phone number, you should be getting contact. And so that should hopefully work out better than what you've seen. Other comments? Anybody have a motion to, on this matter?
I, no, I like the project and I'd like to make a motion, move forward with it if we could. I'd like to move that we approve resolution 2019-25 and thereby certify that PEN 180205, a conditional use permit for transitional residential care housing, is exempt from provisions of the California Environmental Act, SEQA, and it's a Class 32 calicor, calicor exemption and SEQA Guidelines, Section 15332 for infill development projects, and also approve conditional use permit PEN 18-0204 based on the findings contained in this resolution and subject to the attached conditions of approval, including Exhibit A.
That was a lot, I'll just say I'll second.
Well done. All right, we have a, a first by Commissioner Breaker and a second by Commissioner Dejeanay. Please cast your vote. It's approved. We have a staff wrap-up.
Yes, the action taken by the Pining Commission is an appealable action. Any interested party would need to file the appeal within 15 days of the action, directed in writing to the Community Development Director stating specific reasons for the appeal and along with the appropriate fee. If an appeal is received, it would be agendized for a hearing before the City Council. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, the next item on the agenda is other commissioner, commissioned business. And it doesn't look like we have any. So that's that. The next item is staff comments. Do we have any comments?
I do not.
Good, and then moving right along. The next item is Commissioner comments. Do we have any Commissioner comments? Wow, we are moving right along here. Oh, as a, as the new chairman, I declare that this meeting is adjourned until the next, until the next meeting on May 9th. Have a good night.